I'd like to call to order the Board of Education regular meeting. Today's date is Wednesday, October 28th, and ask everybody to please rise for the pleasure of me.
Thank you.
In the event of an emergency, certified within the exit room from one side door leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobile since this may cause rapid calls or watch any kind of emergency vehicles. Thank you, Patty. Before we start, if everybody would like to take a look at the agenda and if there are any visitors that would like to speak about the agenda, now is your time. Okay. Our first item is our consent agenda, which is our minutes and treasurer report, financial matters. I want to make note of donation that were received from East End Lions Club for 50 children's disposable masks for the elementary nurse's office. We have our CSE recommendations. And are there any questions from the board on the consent agenda? Okay, can we have a motion approved, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is old business.
We have no old business.
No old business, okay. And then that will lead us right to the superintendent's report, which I understand you have a presentation, so we'll turn it over to you.
So just prior to starting the presentation, I just wanted to point out that last week was the New York State School Boards Association Board of Education Recognition Week, and it was put in place and designed to give recognition to board members, which in New York State serve in a totally voluntary capacity and put in a great deal of time and effort into that. So we just wanted to give you these certificates of award. So we're gonna pass them out for you. Judy Forchet.
Thank you.
Brian Tobin. Scott Leefen. So, you know, thank you for all that you do for this community. You know, it really is, it's a very thankful position. You guys have told me that, and at times it can be a thankless position, but you know, you do it well, and having worked with you for a few months now, it's very clear to me that you have the interest of everybody in this community at heart, and so it's nice that you get some recognition for that once in a while. So I'm gonna move over here now. If you guys would like to come sit, or you can just turn, whichever is easier for you.
I think we're far enough clear how we can turn.
grade through 12th grade, one to all of our parents, and then one to all of our teachers. The surveys mirrored each other, so the questions, although tailored a little bit to a teacher or student or a parent, were asking the same thing on each survey. You know, the respondents from the survey ranged in students from third through 12th grade, parents of students in every grade, inclusive of those who opted to have their children learn remotely, and teachers from the elementary and secondary school. The survey was open for part of all about 11 days, and the number of responses were significant, but not as high as we may have wanted. We had 183 student responses, 255 parent responses, and 67 teacher responses. Again, like I said before, it's certainly a number that puts us in the significantly, the significant range statistically, you know, but earlier surveys, when we came to reopening school, were a little bit higher than these. So, oh, boy. Eric, oop, there we go. Although I'm not gonna highlight every question on here, we had one question that was specifically designed on a five-point Likert scale for safety. How comfortable are you that you're safe at school? Our students responded a 4.3 out of 5. Parents were at average of 3.4 out of 5, and teachers were 3.5 out of 5. So it was nice to see that although everybody wasn't in the very comfortable range, the majority of the people here were comfortable that they're safe at school. We did have open-ended comments, open-ended comments for most of our questions to gather feedback, and I'll share some of that with you at the end. You know, we had a question to compare distance learning from last year to this year, and every subgroup that we had, students, parents, and teachers, all felt that it was a little bit better than it was last year. You know, our scale went from much worse, being a 1, to much better, being a 5. Students, 3.9, parents, 4.0, and teachers, 3.6. Structured schedule, we saw similar results, 3.6, 3.9, and 3.9. So it seems that the structure we put in place of the day was a little bit more manageable for students, teachers, and parents. You know, incidentally, I did get to speak with some kids and also read their response about this. I think that they enjoyed some of the freedom they had last year, and, you know, the structure. Although, although it was interesting, and their responses were very candid and truthful, and I believe they, believe that the structure was good, they liked kinda setting it themselves a little bit. When we talked about, you know, how they preferred their home lessons, you can see that between 80, 82 and 96 or 97% wanted either livestream or Google Meet, where you could interact and hear what's going on all the time, you know. So even with the difficulties, and we clearly have some difficulties because this is not a perfect model, the two that we're using in class right now were the ones that people seem to prefer for their lessons that they're receiving when they're at home. Comments and suggestions about it. Students and teachers were very positive about the renewed interactions with each other. I would say they almost universally commented that the most positive thing about this year is being around their teachers, being around their friends, you know, being back with the people that they care about and that they know care about them. Individual feelings varied greatly regarding the current situation and its effectiveness. There were a lot of people that, you know, it was perfect and things are great, and there were others where, you know, they were very, they were struggling, and I think that those are really true and accurate. I don't think, you know, I think a perfect model, even when you're in school for one person, is totally imperfect for the next. So, you know, the answers really were, they ranged greatly. It's difficult to hear, these were some of the more tangible things that we're trying to work on now. Difficult to hear the teachers at home, you know, through the computer. Teachers need more time and training to deliver instruction and plan this way because it's different, and it's different than it was in the past, and, you know, it's, you know, it's, has to be managed differently, so we're trying to provide them with that. Need to continue to enhance our technology, came from both, all three groups. Screen time at home can sometimes be oppressive for students. You know, we're gonna look at the amount of time we're asking people to be on each class. We did do that at the beginning, and, you know, our teachers really embraced it well, and I think, you know, we put kids on maybe a little more than is manageable. There's a desire by many to get all students in daily, and it's something that we're gonna, districts are looking at now, some districts are starting to do, some are deciding whether they're gonna start to do that, so it's something that we're gonna start to gather information on. We need to continue to make the best of this situation, and there really is no perfect answer for the current situation. You know, action items that we are working on already, or will be working on very sooning. Soon, we have training and planning time planned for Tuesday's conference day. We have two 90-minute Google sessions based on surveys that teachers are taking now, so that we can tailor them to exactly what they need in their classrooms. We will also have training sessions on Kami, NearPod, Remind, a number of the other tech pieces that we have been able to bring in and purchase. We will also have common planning time for them to work with their peers on that day, so we're putting, we're putting time, we specifically designed that day off of the surveys that we received from our teachers to try to provide them with what they need. We're also looking at utilizing substitute coverage to give them some common planning time during the weeks going ahead. You know, ideally, if we can get a half a day to a day, you know, a month, it would give them the opportunity to meet with their peers in school and do some more common planning. You know, we, you know, we absolutely understand that you need more time to plan some of this stuff, and so we're trying to carve some of that out. We are purchasing two wall speakers and two cordless microphones to demo in classes now, to see if our kids at home can hear a little bit better, if the teacher's wearing a cordless mic, or if we put a wall speaker up in the front. So we just, you know, we just put in to purchase the two of those. We'll demo two here, two at the elementary school, and we'll see which work better, and then we will hopefully create a better situation for our students to be able to hear at home. You know, we're looking at the possibility of surveying teachers, students, and parents and to see, you know, to see if they're open to utilizing barriers and masks to get additional students into school, like some of the districts on the island are starting to do now. And then we're gonna continue to plan for opportunities for students to engage with peers more frequently. We had a senior event this Friday, which we canceled because of rain, and we pushed it to next Friday, but it's gonna be an outdoor event where they're gonna have music, and we're not gonna barbecue, we're actually gonna have lunches brought in, individual lunches, so that we can stay in sync with the guidelines that we have in place, but it'll give them time to unwind and spend some time with their, with their senior peers, and, you know, it'll hopefully take the place of one of the, you know, the, we modeled it to try to take the place of like the senior barbecue that they normally have at the beginning of the year. And so we're gonna continue, you know, we've done some interesting things with our music groups and our plays and our clubs, where we've been able to get kids either distance together or remotely together and give them some of the opportunities that we didn't know whether we'd be able to, and we need to continue to look for those. So, again, you know, there really is a great deal more information on the surveys than that, but, you know, we're pulling those pieces off and trying to utilize them to provide better opportunities for instruction and also for, you know, for social interaction for our students. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have a couple. Do you have any indication why the parents, it seemed that a lot of the parents preferred livestream compared to the other groups? Was there any indication as to why, comments on that?
You know, when I asked a little bit, and I did not ask a lot of parents, I think that livestreaming, the live portion of Google Meet may have been viewed as interchangeable by a lot of people.
Oh, okay.
Because the truth is, a lot of them that chose livestreaming, we only have really a few teachers livestreaming, the rest are all using, but they're using the Google, the live component of Google Meet. So I think that that was just perceived as, you know, when I looked at the, when I looked at that slide, I believe that, I believe when you look at the 39 and the 48, I think that to many people, Google Meet and livestream are very similar things. Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. I have another question. On the screen time, where they're talking about it being oppressive, did you find that was more with the younger grades, like the 3 through 6, or was it across the board?
No, it was, it was, you know, it's, it was universal, but it really is all over the map, because one of the comments was, 20 minutes when we're on distance learning isn't enough, we should have 40 for all nine periods. So it really, really, you know, the answers are all over the map.
Right, and it doesn't seem to break down by each group.
No, no, and we're still disaggregating some of it. If we find that, then we would look to tweak different levels, you know, elementary and secondary are not the same thing. Even, even 7, 8 are not the same as, say, a 12th grade student.
That's what I was curious.
Yes.
Are we gonna be doing a K2 survey?
Are we gonna be doing?
Parents, at least, parents and teachers?
Parents, the survey was for all grades.
Oh, the parents was for all grades?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
The students was only 3 through 12.
Students was only 3 through 12. The parents, the survey was for all teachers, all parents, and then 3 through 12 students.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Just, do you feel safe, or, I mean, interested, is it, I don't feel safe with COVID or in general?
I don't think you would've gotten a 5 if we just asked that question in general. You know, I think that, I didn't, we didn't, we didn't say to you not feeling safe because of the COVID situation at school. We said, you know, on a scale of 1 to 5, 1 being not safe at all, and 5 being very safe, how safe do you feel in school? So I don't think it was related just to COVID, you know.
Again, interesting, the difference between the parents and the students on that.
Yes, yeah. And it's funny, because when I spoke to Mr. Rasch, and he said that he believes that the student number would've been high on that question anytime. He said he believes that students feel very comfortable and safe here at school. Typically, elementary school students feel very safe at school. It's a very nurturing environment. But I don't think, I don't think the 4.3 that the students, I don't, I don't think in a normal year, it would've, you know, it might've been 4.5 or 4.6.
Right.
I don't think it would've been a 5 point, there's, because there's some children that don't feel safe at school ever, but we didn't, we didn't break it out that way. As we're learning with these surveys, that, you know, once we survey them, you come up with kinda like a whole bunch of questions for the next one that you'd like to ask. You know, we did ask about, it's not on here because there weren't really a tremendous amount of responses for it, but we did ask why students were kept home. That was part of the survey, and almost all of it was concerns about medical within the family or with individual children and their medical situations. None of them related it to how we started the school year or anything like that. So it was very, it's very, very good information for us to try to continue to do a better job. Okay, thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is our personnel recommendations from the superintendent. We have some people leaving the district, Mr. Irwin is leaving, and we have mentor pairing. I'm not going to read them all, I don't think I need to. Substitute nurse, and we are naming Mr. Scheid as a data privacy protection officer. Sounds very serious. And we have some revised tenure dates due to childcare leaves, and I don't think we need to read all of those. Does anybody need to speak a motion to support the personnel recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, thank you. And the capital reserve fund, we have a bunch of reserved resolutions. This is why Mrs. O'Fryes didn't come tonight. Are these all, do these all have to be read?
Everybody has, they're all in everybody's.
Right. But we probably, I mean, I know she usually reads them for the public, should I do that, you think? Okay. All right, the first one, our capital reserve fund. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the capital reserve fund previously established pursuant to 3651 of the education law as authorized in the board resolution at the June 24, 2020 Board of Ed meeting in the amount of $1,749,890 to be funded, part of it from the insurance reserve, which is $1,189,890, and $560,000 from the unassigned fund balance at June 30, from June 30, 2020. Do I have a?
So moved.
Second.
This isn't Rollapole, this is Reagan. All in favor?
Aye.
The next is our retirement contribution, contribution, which is ERS, for CSEA employees, correct? Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the retirement contribution reserve fund, ERS, originally established in 2007 pursuant to general municipal law 6-R in the amount of $125,000 to be funded from the unassigned fund balance at June 30, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Retirement contribution reserve for TRS, this is the teacher retirement fund. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the retirement contribution reserve fund, ERS/TRS, originally established in 2019 pursuant to general municipal law 6-R in the amount of $230,000 to be funded from the unassigned fund balance at June 30, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Workers' compensation reserve fund. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the workers' compensation reserve fund originally established in 2008 pursuant to general municipal law 6-J in the amount of $65,000 from the unassigned fund balance at June 30, 2020. Do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Employee benefit accrued liability reserve. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the employee benefit accrued liability reserve fund previously established pursuant to general municipal law 6-P in the amount of $110,000 from the unassigned fund balance at June 30, 2020. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Repair reserve. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the additional funding to the repair reserve fund authorized by the voters in May 2009 in the amount of $100,000 to be funded from the unassigned fund balance at June 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She carries. Unemployment insurance reserve. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the unemployment reserve fund previously established pursuant to general municipal law 6-M in the amount of $60,000 from the unassigned fund balance at June 30, 2020. Brian? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And the next item is the Suffolk City School Bus Stop Arm Enforcement Program.
Suffolk County.
Suffolk County.
Stoplight cameras, stop arm cameras.
The stop arms that come out on the buses, they, they passed legislation about putting them on, but many districts and bus companies never did because there was an expense to it, and then they, and Chuck, you correct me if I'm wrong, because I know you had a lot of these communications, they found a source of funding, and the county has paid for all of it. We just had to adopt it and agree to doing it. So we did agree to it over the summer, and then we had to go through all the logistics of what it would be and make sure we got final commitment from the county, which we did.
So we didn't have these on?
No, they, it's, these are the big, they're not the small sign that comes out. These are, they sit up against the bus and they come out like eight feet, right? You know?
Oh, off the front bumper?
Off the front bumper, yeah.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah, they either come out off the front bumper or off the side that goes right next to the, depending on the type of bus. Most come out off the front bumper, and they literally will block an entire lane of road next to your bus, so the cars can't go zooming by. And, you know, they're, my understanding is they're very effective and they're very beneficial, and, you know, they'll be, they'll be utilized by both Sunrise and us, since we, you know, since we have some of our own buses, and then we contract with Sunrise. Our part of this enforcement program and the part of the funding that we're entitled to will take care of ours and then a number of buses, the ones that we use from Sunrise. Did I get that all correct, Chuck?
Great, okay. Do I have to read the whole thing?
No.
So can we have a motion to?
So moved.
Participate in the Suffolk County School Bus Stop Arm Enforcement Program. Brian, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Finance committee report, that would be me. We understand from Mr. Scheid that the audit will, should be done, the Cullen and Krasinski audit, next week, so we'll be working on putting, you know, having an audit committee meeting and getting the information to the board after that. And building committee.
We did have a meeting, and actually, we were almost to the end of our baseball field saga, and it's been a long time, but I think, or you'll see on 19 is a change order, and we're close to closing that out. We believe it's as good as it's gonna get, and the people who are gonna be using that field feel it's safe and usable. It's not perfect, but we're just about there, and, you know, considering the scope of the projects that we performed, you know, nothing always goes as expected, and this was not a huge issue, but it was important. So we think we're finally done with the baseball field. We're going to put out, what's it called, an RFP to see, to look at perhaps using a different architectural firm going forward, and our, some of our staff is gonna come up with a list of future things that are gonna need to be repaired or replaced, and then Chuck is gonna give us a final total on where all the bond money went. There may be a little left, I'm not 100% sure, but we've spent most of it, $9 million, was it? I think that, that our taxpayers were generous enough, you know, to allow us to spend. I mean, look at this, you know, look at this facility, it's like, it's like a college facility parts of it, so again, that's a big thank you to the people who pay the bills, and it's just nice to come in here and sit in this nice auditorium in our library and beautiful athletic fields and tennis courts. So we have another meeting scheduled for, I think, the 3rd Thursday, and just before Thanksgiving, the Thursday before Thanksgiving, where we're going to finally close out, hopefully get a reconciliation of all the bond money, what monies might be left, and then get an idea from our, our staff about what things we need to look at next. You know, there's always ongoing things, there's always a roof leaking someplace and other things that need to be fixed, but this district is in a very good place, it really is. And that's it for the building committee.
Thank you, and thank you guys for staying on that issue for so long, especially that baseball field issue, because it's been a long time coming. I'm glad, hopefully, and hopefully our kids will actually get to play on it this year.
Well, that's another issue, unfortunately.
That's another issue, but hopefully we'll have a season, you know, I mean, I guess if there was a year for it not to be ready, it was last spring, so, okay. With that, we have change orders to cover what looks like the final, the final amounts for that field, and that's the change order number two, that's on the agenda for Laser Industries, and that's a total additional cost for the district of $41,250, correct? So do we have a motion to accept that change order?
Can I just, do you wanna explain it, Chuck? It's, the additional cost for us is really the 13,750.
Oh, it's the 13,750, okay.
The district and the three people involved are all splitting the cost, so it's gonna cost the district an extra $13,750.
All right, that was, we had agreed to split it, so that's our share.
We split four ways.
Okay.
The person it would be paid to is not paying themselves, so their part came off.
Their part, and then the other two.
Yes, the other two that agreed to pay both sent us a check for the 13,750, which we already have.
Okay.
And that makes up the 41,250.
Okay.
Okay?
We have a motion? Do we have a motion to approve that change order? Brian, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Another change order. Roland's Electric, and this is to add new, to add additional circuits. Something that will let us shut down things quickly. That's what it looks like.
Clarification on that?
Clarification?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Just clarification on what this, what this actually means.
Sounds like shops, though.
Well, I will, before I answer that question, I will say, because this is so late, because the change order goes through a lot of steps. It goes from the vent, the contractor to the architect. And bottom line, this was lost for a bunch, you know, probably at least about a year. I don't recall, but yeah, my understanding is in the tech shop, there was work on the panel in order to meet all the, the supply for the equipment. So I think, again, it was just an additional work that was not foreseen in the original plans.
So this is in the shop?
I believe so.
Yeah, no, it's not, I didn't read it. It looks like they have those emergency stop buttons for the saws and, is that what these EPO buttons are?
I think so. I don't, I don't. This was before me, you know?
Okay.
Happened before I got here, so unfortunately I'm not.
And this was already obviously done quite some time ago.
Right, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think the EPO buttons are what you're talking about, the emergency push buttons.
Yeah. Emergency push off. Okay, Policy Committee Report, is that Mr. Lathan?
We have one, it's rather timely because of all the online stuff we're doing. But it's a Information and Data Privacy Security Breach and Notification Policy. Includes regulations for notifications, data privacy, security breach. It includes a Parents' Bill of Rights for Student Data Privacy and Security and a Data Security and Privacy Plan Agreement Form that would be given to a contractor that may need to do work on the system that he would have, they would have access to possibly protected individual information. The one thing that I would just draw people's attention to is the third paragraph on the second page of the policy, which reads, "There are no circumstances will the district sell PII. It will not disclose PII for any marketing or commercial purpose, facilitate its use or disclosure by any other party for any marketing or commercial purpose or commit another party to do so. Further, the district will take steps to minimize the collection, processing, and transmission of PII, personal identificating information." When we went with the Google Classrooms, there was a concern that Google was mining all this data. And they weren't, they said they weren't, but it's, it's now policy and this comes from the state that it's just not going to happen.
Okay. I think that would be.
This is up for first read.
People happy, okay. So to do a resolution?
And if you want to read the rest, it's really gripping stuff, but.
We have time now, between now and the next meeting. I was just glad that somebody else printed it out for me, so. All right, so some, the motion to accept the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And we will see that at our next meeting, I presume. All right, that is all the committee reports. Do we have any new business? I have one thing. I, I know I brought this up at one point before and I see that we are, especially now that we're talking about training and this and that, looking to provide more substitute coverage. And I would like to, it's my personal opinion that we should have a, some sort of process where when we are getting substitutes in the school, we are always going to certified teachers first. And, you know, we have a lot of non-certified people willing to substitute, but I would personally, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, I personally would like to have a system where we're making sure we're getting certified teachers first.
Freshman Whiskey just came up a couple of months ago, didn't it?
I, I think we chatted about it.
Yeah, over the summer, I thought you brought it up.
Yeah, and I just.
Yeah, ideally, I think we would all feel the same way.
Right.
The problem is with the, with the thousands of teachers that were hired in the city and the hundreds of teachers that were hired on the island, there's a shortage of even classroom teachers.
Right.
Subs even worse.
Right.
So I, I think that almost daily, we call almost, on almost every sub, close to every sub that's on our list.
Okay.
We are, we are looking, because they're all getting hired right away, like, you know, we, the UPK teacher we have is, was the second one of the month. Because when we got UPK, within a week, the UPK teacher that was lined up by Scope was hired away.
Right.
Joe Irwin was offered a year and a half leave. They're, they're really, you know, it's getting, it's getting hard right now and.
Oh, no, I, I understand that. I just want to make sure at the top of our list are, are certified teachers. And I don't know what our process is for calling, but I just would prefer that we do that because.
I'll meet with parents and Ellen again and check with them and go through it.
Just in my opinion, the more we're bringing those that are certified and the better chance we have of knowing who they are to fill any open positions that come up quickly. Because I think that that's a really good way.
And we've interviewed a couple of subs and I've had them like all written paperwork and.
And then they get a job.
And then they, sorry, but I got hard, you know, so it's challenging.
Some sort of a, a system that, that would kind of.
I don't know what, how we're.
Up on top of the coal.
I don't know that it does. I, and I, that's my point. I'm not quite sure what the procedure is and how the system works, but I, I would like us to try and ensure that we, and that's my personal opinion. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, so it would be.
Not sure, I'd rather a certified teacher.
I'll find out, some, I'll find out and try to get you something in either the next, if not this Friday's packet.
Okay, okay. I mean, are you guys in agreement down there?
That's fine, if you can find them.
Oh, no, 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 absolutely, I get that.
What do we pay a certified teacher for a day of subbing? What's the number? One twenty-five, how many hours is that? They're here, seven hours?
About a seven hour day, yeah.
What's that per hour? Just curious.
Less than twenty dollars if it's one twenty-five, yeah.
About thirty.
So you could make more working in a restaurant, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Right. No, and that's the point. If we have them, I would, I would prefer they get called first. I understand that that's not always, they're not always available. And that is probably another thing we should probably look at is whether our rate is competitive to be getting good quality substitutes in here.
Of course, the living here is very expensive.
You need to jump a heart attack.
I know, we're going to get Chuck.
I'll get you guys some information on it.
Something to look at when we go into the next budget season possibly.
We looked at it countywide last year because countywide, people are running into daily sub shortages in every district. So I'll, I'll get you information about what's being paid to subs, surrounding what we're paying to subs. Yeah, I know that they go, there were districts paying one seventy-five to subs in the middle of the island and they were on the list of being short.
Sure.
So I'll get you, I'll get you what I can about how we do it and about what, what the pay is, you know, around and then we can go from there.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody else have any other business?
Yeah, could we, could we look at, we didn't go full in because we didn't want to reduce course offerings? Correct? To maintain the space. It was my understanding, would we have gone full in if we had cut some course offering?
I, I don't think we could have gone full in either way.
At all, okay.
It would have been, it probably would have been, if we had a, you know, if we had a, a one-track fit to everybody, we could have balanced classes out better. But with the amount of classrooms we have and with the six-foot space, I don't think we would have been able to go all in, even if we had a single track. You know, we would have been able to go like three-quarters in because our classes would have been balanced out better. You know, the, the way that, you know, the way that districts around, Locust Valley just brought in their twelfth, their full twelfth grade two weeks ago, they're bringing in their seventh next week. And, you know, they're phasing it in, but they're, they're just cutting down the amount of space in a room. The guidelines in the state are you have to have social distance or barriers. You know, the guideline isn't both. Many places are using both.
Back to either.
Was it that way?
It was both when we started.
It was recommended both, but there, you know, there's districts that are going one or the other. And, you know, I mean, my personal feeling is that it's something that's very worthwhile for us to look at because other districts are already doing it. It gives us an opportunity to see what their success is with it. And then we can make a prudent recommendation, you know, for our community and, and, you know, see how the people in our community feel about it, our students, our teachers.
I for one would like to see, have everybody see our success with it. Because I sat through a six-hour course today and it was dreadful. I can't imagine what these kids are going through. Absolutely dreadful.
Online?
An online course?
I would rather have everybody say, man, Southall did a pretty good job, let's do that, than wait for somebody else to do it. Just my, my, you run the place, but that's my, you have my support if that's what you want to do.
Did we initially start preparing for the barriers?
We did not, because the barriers that we have were not approved by New York State originally. The only ones that were originally approved by New York State were the, what was it called, Chuck? The material?
Polycarbonate?
It was polycarbonate barriers that cost about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars each. You know, the ones that we have cost about forty dollars each, forty-three dollars each. But until it went through the full building code process and, so we ended up, we received our barriers in those first two weeks that we were closed, we received them and got them all put up. Literally over the weekend that we would have brought everybody in. We brought custodians in over the weekend before school would have started. The reason for that was by the time they were approved by the state for us to use them, you know, you have to be approved partially from state ed and partially from the building code. You know, the building code was considering them a fixed, whatever it was, so we couldn't use anything but polycarbonate. So that put us back a little bit.
So our, we had these barriers?
We have them, we, we would need about, we've already started the process of figuring, you know, what we would need. We would need a couple hundred more.
Up here.
Up here to double, not to double, but to add, you know, six or eight or ten desks to the rooms that we would need to do to add. You know, our, our numbers are not completely proportionate. And we also have some very big classrooms here, different than other places, because we have an older, unique building. So we might have fourteen desks in a room where one day you have fourteen kids in and we have fourteen barriers. And then the next day you only have eight kids in because that class is twenty-two students and not fourteen. But we can't balance every class because when they go to their next class, and this is where the course offering piece comes in, they go to their next class, you know, if we balanced it to, you know, say eleven and eleven, then it could be five and, you know, seven in the next one. And it's so, you know, the way that we balanced it, we weren't over the number that we could fit in any room with a six-foot space and split down the middle, you know, the best that we possibly could.
We're adding, also using last name as a guidance too. So you, you had a lot of factors and variables there.
How far away would we, are we to be barrier?
We, we ordered about a hundred and twenty more because we needed some for the cafeterias, we needed some for the small group instruction in the elementary. We, you know, we had been a little bit short and I think they took, what, ten days to get here? Week and a half? Yeah.
So we have about a hundred and twenty more coming?
We have not ordered the additional. We ordered, they came already. We ordered them about three, three or four weeks ago, they came within ten days.
Oh, and those, that's not, those are not for bringing everybody in?
That's not, that was for what we're doing now. You know, we needed some for like reading rooms and resource rooms and, and new places like that that we may not have exactly accounted for. And then we needed a bunch down in the cafeteria because we had taken a, a number of those out to put them in the elementary to make sure we were ready for that group to come in. So I can get you all those numbers and I can put, I can put how many barriers we'll need, how quickly we can get them based on our last order. And then we can start putting together a survey to send out to our, you know, to our parents and our kids and our teachers to gauge, you know, you know, to gauge their willingness.
Comfort level.
Yeah. If, if the comfort level is going to put a huge percentage, the kids, I spoke with a number of kids already and that's.
Kids are all in.
I know mine is.
I believe that.
But they're not parents.
I believe that districts that have looked at it on the island and started doing it had over eighty to ninety percent of their parents looking, you know, to do it when they sent out. So, you know, I think it's worthwhile to look at and I'm happy that some other places have started it and they've had no, you know, they've had no negative effects other than the ones that we pretty much have on a regular basis now. So I'll, I'll start gathering all that information and our team will start putting stuff together to, to gauge whether it's something that, that, you know, people in this community are inclined to do.
Great, thank you. Any other new business? All right, now is our opportunity for our second hearing of visitors and this is where we entertain any comments and questions about anything going on in school. Would anybody like to come share with us?
Angela Tondo, Southall. So if we have enough barriers for all the desks, we can come back full time? Is that what, even with the six feet and the windows wide open and winter coats and hats and gloves and?
We're gonna, we're gonna look at it and, you know, there are districts that are doing that right now, yes.
Okay, so we can fit all the kids in a classroom? I mean, that's why, I, I thought that was why we couldn't do it, because we couldn't fit everyone with six feet apart and?
With, with the six feet apart, we would not be six feet apart if we were to do that. We might be five feet, we might be four feet.
And that's, I mean, that's, I mean, I don't think anyone has a problem with that.
Again, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna work with the Department of Health, make, make sure that we're very clear. My understanding is that the guidance is six feet. They prefer you have six feet, the state, but that's guidance. That's not, you know, there are, there is guidance and then there is direction. Direction, we have to take. Masks are mandatory. You know, masks are mandatory because you can't maintain six feet always in a school. When you walk in the halls, when you're, you know, so masks are mandatory in schools, whereas barriers are not. You know, my understanding is that you can have six feet or the barrier. Now, at the beginning, there was, it wasn't completely clear on that.
Right.
You know, but there are districts that have clearly worked towards doing that. Some of them are neighboring districts. You know, they're in the process of working towards it. And there are others that are ahead of them that I've spoken to the superintendent, you know, it happens to be that I spoke to the superintendent of one and they're, you know, they're bringing kids in at the maximum distance they can with barriers and masks and bringing in more than what you can do with a six-foot distance. So it's something that where we started to investigate already. That's why I have some of the numbers and some of the answers for you. And, you know, now we're at the point where, you know, with the will of the board, we'll start putting something together to go out to our community. Because the truth is if we're going to do this and ninety percent of the people aren't going to send their kids in, then it's not a good thing to do for our community. I don't think that would be the case, but again.
I don't think that would be the case at all.
Yeah, I don't, we don't guess at these things, though we ask.
No, you ask, I, I get that.
Ask and we get the real, we get legitimate information. So the first part would be to work with the Department of Health and go through the state guidelines really very specifically and make sure. But my understanding is it is, it is six feet or barriers. Masks, again, are required with the breaks and, and when movement, you always have to have them and things like that. And then there's logistics we'd have to figure out. Like we might move our students by cohort. First bell of one cohort starts, the next bell, the next cohort starts, so we don't jam up in the doorways.
Right.
You know, we do have, I mean, we have the luxury of having nice, big, wide hallways here. So we have some real pluses going for us that some other places don't necessarily have. You know, we might, you know, exit the building two minutes apart by cohort. Give people, you know, we want to, we want to make sure that we're doing everything as safely as we possibly can if we're going to.
Which I think we all appreciate. I mean, I think we've done, you know, a great job, but I think, you know.
There's, there's a good amount of preparation, which we have already started because we want to make sure that whatever we would need to be able to do before we put it out to everybody, whether they want to do it, we want to make sure we can do it. So that's really the point we're at right now.
It's nice, it's nice to know that we're at least coming up with other plans. Thank you.
Trying, you're very welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, well, we are at Board Member Commentary. But we start, Brian, start it, you're right.
Again, I just want to thank Tony and, and the rest of the staff. Clearly, you're, you're walking a tight rope every day. And the fact that you're going to look into this potential change for the benefit of the kids is great. You know, these, these kids want to go back to class. to go back to class. And like Scott said, if we could, you know, be ahead of the curve, it'd be great. So, appreciate it.
Sean?
COVID drags on, you know? It's Groundhog Day. And I think what's so upsetting to all of us is that, you know, we just don't know when it's going to end. But I'm delighted that we have not closed since our initial hiccup. And how much of that is luck? You know, obviously, there's some luck involved. And a lot of it has to do with the, you know, people doing the right thing in the community and here. And I just, I'm sad on many levels, but, you know, and I hate to use the phrase now, but Southold is a special place, and I say it so much that now that's my, my moniker. But, you know, we're, we're going to be okay in the end. I just, I wish we'd be okay sooner rather than later. You know, kids are great, kids are resilient. That's all I have to say. They'll, they'll be better than the adults.
Great.
I'm going to be traumatized for the rest of my life. The kids will be fine.
Scott?
Just to Sean's point earlier about how nice a place we have, it's these, these reserve funds that really help us have a nice, beautiful saving day. Maintain the programs. And that's because of the taxpayers saying that, yes, we want to have this fund. And, you know, it's, it's a good, prudent, this is a saving board. It's not a, let's go out and spend it board. And it's, I'm just proud to be a part of that. And it shows even on, you know, closer districts that don't, you know, they're, they're, they elected boards in the past that didn't want to raise taxes or whatever, or didn't want to establish a reserve fund. And now they're, they're bearing the brunt of that. You guys have voted for a board that believes in maintaining these reserves and responsibly funding them. So, you know, elections have consequences, even at the local school board level. So I would just encourage everybody to go out and vote next Tuesday, no matter who you're going to vote for. Because, you know, they, they do.
Matters.
They do mean things. And that's all.
I wish Mrs. O'Fries was here just because of this, but thank you. I think she would say that she takes great joy in serving on the board, and I think we all do. And I know as a board member with this particular board and the administration we work with and the teachers and the parents, and it, there isn't, I don't think there's a better school to work for and be in. I really don't. And it's from this level all the way down. So, I mean, I know I'm biased, but I truly believe that we, we all work well together here and care about the community, care about the school, and care about the kids. So I appreciate being a part of it, Paul. Thank you all for coming, and we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.